Oh, yeah. Good job. Yeah, like make waffle cones for the entire summer.
Yeah.
How's it doing?
Yes, I hit for the fun gig, right?
Yep, I like it.
It got her out of the house.
Now she can't find it, he's like, I love it.
Yeah. She'll expect to crack my wallet. I texted her the other day, she said she was on one, she was on text, but couldn't answer one, telling her I'm saying it. And I was like, will you work anywhere? Come, where are you going? She said the law says with who? And then she didn't respond again when I asked who, I was like, okay, I did. I was like, yeah, I did, who you went with?
Uh, yes and no. Good evening, everyone, uh, welcome to the city commission meeting for November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. We have a pretty decent agenda, so we're gonna move on to through this as quickly as possible. Uh, if I could have a roll call, please.
Weeden.
Yes.
Slim. George.
Yes.
Money.
Present.
Bianski.
Present.
Thank you, at this time, I'll take a motion to open the public hearing number one.
Also move to open public hearing number one.
Thank you, sir, do we have a second or support?
Money, I have support.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, the purpose of the public hearing is to hear public comments on the proposed ordinance twenty-twenty-five dot one-one slash four-four-four Unified Development Code, also referred to as the zoning ordinance. The proposed zoning ordinance to establish zoning districts and land use regulations governing the city of Buchanan, Bering County, and the state of Michigan, to provide for regulations governing non-conforming uses and structures, to provide for zoning Board of Appeals and its duties and powers to provide for the administration of this ordinance, including an official whose duty it shall be to enforce provisions thereof, to provide penalties for the violations of the ordinance and to provide for conflicts with this ordinance and regulations. At this time, the city commission will hear public comments on the proposed Unified Development Code, also referred to as Buchanan Zoning Code Ordinance, Ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dot one-one slash four-four-four. All persons wishing to comment shall be given opportunity to do so. Any person addressing the commission shall do so at the podium, state his or her name, and direct their comments directly to the commission. In the event that many people wish to comment, as I, a presiding officer, may determine that each person speaking shall limit his or her comments to three minutes. As a presiding officer, I may terminate any public comments that are unusually, unreasonably lengthy, violate the city's rules and procedure for city commission meetings, or are unrelated to the subject of the public hearing. At this time, are there any public comments? Okay. At this time, I'll take a motion, uh, if there is no comments from the public, to close the public hearing number one.
This is money, I'd move to close the public hearing number one.
Thank you, sir, do we have support?
I'll support.
Thank you.
I'm all in favor.
Oh, I.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to call to order for public hearing number two, can we have a roll call, please, in hearing number two?
Weeden.
Yes.
Slim. George.
Yes.
Money.
Present.
And Bianski.
You.
Very good. This public hearing aims to gather comments on proposed ordinance twenty-twenty-five dot one-two four-four-five, which amends chapter thirty-four of the code of ordinances specifically Article eleven about even-year elections, section thirty-four to twenty-nine regarding the filing of nominating petitions. Once again, presiding officers, same comments as before. If you have public comments, please approach the podium and state your name for the record. Okay, seeing no public comments, I will take a motion to close public hearing number two.
This is money, I'd move to close public hearing number two.
Do we have support?
I'll support.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, moving on to public hearing number three, can we have roll call on number three, please?
Mike.
Present.
Bianski.
You.
Weeden.
Yes.
And George.
Yes.
Thank you. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear public comments on the possible sale of city property located at the following addresses. After the public hearing, the commission will consider the sale of said properties at four-zero-five Elizabeth Street, four-eleven Elizabeth Street, four-sixteen Bluff Street, four-eighteen Bluff Street, four-twenty Elizabeth Street, three-fourteen Arctic Street, five-zero-three Arctic Street, four-one-eight Fulton Street, seven-two-four West Row Street, nine-zero-seven Victory Street, eleven-zero-four Victory Street, eleven-zero-six Victory Street, all located within the city of Buchanan, four-nine-one zero-seven. Once again, same comments as before, presiding officer, if you have comments on this particular hearing, please approach the podium and state your name for the record.
I moved to open this public hearing number three. I don't think so, maybe.
Did we not move to open?
I guess you didn't.
Well, we did.
I don't.
I thought we, we.
No, I don't think you did on the one too.
So we did.
Okay, thank you, then, if you should.
So I just moved.
Thank you.
Do we have support? Thank you. In lieu of my previous statements, do we have public comments on the sale of said properties? Okay, seeing no public comment, I will take a motion to close public hearing number three.
This is money, I'd move to close public hearing number three.
Thank you, do we have support?
I'll support.
Thank you, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We now call to order the regular meeting, would you not have any recognition if everyone would join me in a third reading?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you, okay? For the invocation? Manual?
So for the invocation, I will just share a verse from the scripture, a quote, and offer a prayer. So we begin up in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. So the scripture verse here is Luke's Gospel, chapter twenty-two, verse twenty-six. It say, but among you it will be different, for whosoever is great among you must be your servant. And then there's this quote from Oswald Sanders. Say, a true leader influences others spiritually only because the spirit works in the, in and through them to a greater degree than in those they lead. This suggests that spiritual leadership is not based on personal charisma alone, but on the degree to which a leader is infused with the Holy Spirit. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks and praise for your grace, mercy, and faithfulness. Thank you, Lord, for the city of Buchanan. We bless your name for the recently completed city projects. Thank you for ensuring the workers' safety. Thank you, Lord, for every family and business in this city. Thank you for this commission and the leadership it provides. We entrust today's seating of the city commission to your hands. We ask for your guidance, divine insight, and wisdom. May today's deliberations be carried out to the glory of your name. We ask this through our Lord Jesus Christ, your son, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit now and forever. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Weeden.
Yes.
Slim. George.
Yes.
Money.
Present.
And Bianski.
Yes.
Thank you, at this time, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
This is money, I'd move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, do we have support?
I have support.
Thank you, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, we will accept public comments, please approach the podium and state your name for the record, and please keep your comments to three minutes, please. Okay. Seeing no one approached the podium, at this time, I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I will move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, do we have support?
I'll support.
Thank you, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We do not have any scheduled matters from the floor, reports by departments and boards and departments, uh, election report, Cal.
Hi, so since last time we had to cancel, just wanted to give you guys, um, kind of give you election turnout and unofficial results since August just came this. There was some audits that came out from the state, um, we were not chose, so we're just waiting for campus to be complete, um, and I'm pretty sure they are. And then we just have thirty days retention, but just kind of gave you a rundown, put some numbers together about what we saw between A V ballots and in-person. Um, voter turnout was low all the way around for the city and for the county, so, um, yeah, if you have any questions, everything went really well. Election workers, as always, I always give them a ton of credit, they were fantastic as usual. Um, mail pickups, no problems, we were perfect when we arrived at the county and worked through campus, so.
Good news, the turnout was twelve percent, right?
Uh, for us, total averaging, uh, twelve percent, precinct two had about fourteen percent, precinct one was at ten percent.
Absolutely pathetic.
Um, I think that, you know, you see it with these, these smaller ones, these, um, I know that there's some legislation movement um, of just doing, being able to do three elections, um, I know the clerks are really pushing for that, I really hope that passes, it's something I've been fighting for for about ten years now. Um, with, there's so many special elections where it makes it hard to people, people just don't, they don't think about it, right? Um, I'm really hoping that passes where these little ones, these may, these off-year, you know, because we're not supposed to have off-year elections, it's supposed to say even year. Um, I'm hoping that helps with that, because you always come and vote for the big ones, right, but they forget about the small ones. But the best way that you can do that to remember is if you sign up to become an absentee ballot permanent member, no matter what election it is, I will mail you a ballot, and you will always get it for every election, even if you don't hear about it, so that's always one good way to support.
You're not even getting them back, though.
Um, I, those ones, they were not, let's see, I sent out, I issued two hundred, well, four-hundred-and-sixty-four total, and I got about two hundred, I got two-hundred-and-sixty-four back.
So you got fifty percent as a.
I got fifty percent back, yeah.
Well, that's not too bad, I mean, I always raise this question after every election, if there's no off-year elections, why was L M C allowed to have one?
So there is, uh, they are allowed, I, it's just, we try to push, that's like the big thing when I first came here, remember with DICE, which we'll have in twenty-twenty-six, is pushing it onto that August, and with the bigger elections, so that people actually see it, right? Um, you see a lot of municipalities do that, they put them on with those bigger ones, because they want to give the opportunity for their voters to actually vote for it. Um, I'm, I don't have a, you know, opinion either way.
Well, you see it, the off-year on purpose, though, too, because the turnout is so low.
Because the turnout is lower, but that is not, you can't blame those people, you gotta blame the voters, right? Because they know, if they cared, they're gonna show up.
Well, there's nobody, there's nobody at fault for this.
Yeah.
And I just, you know, I'd like to find out some way, you know, if the Facebook Rambo's, if they actually vote, and, because I'd really go after them if they don't, because there's no complaining if you don't go vote.
Yeah.
And this was a very simple, we could have voted this down and made them rethink what they're doing and how they do it.
Well, and with this, like, this is why we opted out of not doing early voting for the local elections, because of the lower percentage, you're paying, you know, six thousand dollars for election workers alone for those nine days, um, and a lot more staff time, a lot more things going on, more, it's not worth it. If we had a higher turnout, where we normally in the city of Buchanan, we have a lower turnout anyways.
Right.
Um, if we had that higher turnout, I would offer more days when it came to those local elections, but.
I don't think I ever asked you, did L M C pay for that election that they backed out of, did they wind up?
The what, last year?
Was it last year, but, they didn't pay for it?
No, because there was other ones, like, we had, we had something else on that, on the ballot at that time.
I know, but we, they joined, they started the ballot, so we joined the ballot.
They started it, yeah.
So technically, they're supposed to pay it, even though taxpayers are paying it.
No, well, because there was other, I think it was actually Buchanan Community Schools that jumped on the ballot when it was then, because they thought the L M C was jumping, so that cost-effectively wise, budget-wise, it's easier, because then they only have to split, they don't have to take the whole cost, right? But then L M C backing out, where other municipalities jumped on, maybe they had a dollar, right, maybe they had a fire millage, something like that, and they're like, hey, yeah, let's take care of this now. Um, but yeah, no, L M C didn't get charged.
Okay.
From our end anyways.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Cal, move on to unfinished business, ordinance twenty-twenty-five dot one-one slash four-four-four, consider the second reading and enactment of the Unified Development Code of the City of Buchanan Zoning Ordinance.
I move to approve the second reading and enactment of ordinance two-zero-two-five point eleven dash four-four-four as presented.
Thank you very much, do we have support?
I'll second.
Thank you, discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
George.
Yes.
Money.
Yep.
Bianski.
Yes.
And Weeden.
Yes. Okay, moving on to item B, ordinance twenty-twenty-five dot one-two slash four-four-five, consider the first reading of the ordinance to amend the chapter thirty-four elections, article two, even-year elections, section thirty-four to twenty-nine, filing of nominating petitions. This time, I'll take a motion.
This is money, I'd move to approve the first reading as presented and scheduled public hearing number two for January twelfth, twenty-twenty-six.
Thank you, sir, do we have support?
I'll support.
Thank you, roll call, please, our discussion, sorry?
Explain this.
Okay, so this, this change was done in two thousand nine, um, eighteen, it used to be that city commissioners would have to file, um, in April, like, most people do. And, um, this is why, for the reason why is because if you have more than six, if three commissioners were up, you had more than six, you would have a primary. Okay, so it narrows it down, so if you had nine people apply to be city commissioner, they would go on the August ballot to narrow it down to six for November. Okay, so if we only get three, that's fine, we won't be on the August ballot, if we get more than six, those candidates will go onto an August ballot to narrow it down. This is so in November, you're not having to choose for three seats for fifteen people, um, and almost, I don't want to use watering down, but, um, it's hard to pick between fifteen people for three spots, right? Uh, so this narrows it down to get the top into the November, just like normal August primaries, what you do when you pick for your favorite people to move forward to November.
It's more difficult to get it on the ballot, too, isn't it?
For what?
If you have fifteen, then you're only supposed to have six.
Yeah, it's, it's, it causes voter confusion for me, um, when you have that many people that are running for three spots, um, it's just really heavy, right, you're just picking three, there's more, um, due for error right there, because you're going down. Um, this way, it's the top six, this is who moves on to November, we're good.
And I just want to make the public aware that Gladys very adamantly fought against them doing what they did, and as soon as she resigned, they did this, and they did it for very specific reasons. They did it to water down the ballot, so just think about that when you go and vote, because I was involved. Just want to make that point.
Roll call, please.
Money.
Yes.
Bianski.
Yes.
Weeden.
Yes.
And George.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to item C, sale of city-owned property, consider the sale of the city-owned properties that were previously mentioned in the hearing, I will not name those properties once again, I think they're on the record, so at this time, I will take a motion to approve the sale of the city-owned properties.
I move to approve the sale of city-owned properties as presented.
Thank you, do we have support?
Money, I support.
Thank you, discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if you may, yes.
Absolutely.
From one of your first was, was brought before you, probably two months ago, we didn't notice, we have one additional property on here. That one was at four-oh-four Elizabeth Street, behind Victory Park, not realizing it was adjacent to the park, we pulled that before we brought it formally before you. We're gonna hold on that a minute, because you know we're looking at some park plans around there, but the rest of the list remains the same as it was. Uh, the plan will be, if you grant permission, I put it together in RFP, we'll put that out to the development community for all these lots, uh, and then we will request, we will probably evaluate those, not probably, we will, on the product they're putting in and how it lines with our community goals, their schedule, we don't want people to sit on these lots, we want a commitment to build on them quickly with fallbacks, and third, price. So, once we get that RFP back, we will evaluate those and bring them before you with a recommendation as to who we sell lots to.
Now, when you say price, are you talking prices, a bidding war starts with the lots or a price of the houses?
The lots, we want to see, somebody's gonna offer us five, our minimum's five thousand dollars, we're.
Right, okay, alright.
Yes.
Very good. Okay. Uh, roll call, please.
Bianski.
Yes.
Weeden.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
And Money.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, restrictive covenant, consider the allowing the city manager to execute the restrictive covenant updates for the former Clark equipment historic properties.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the commission, uh, this is one we've been talking about for a little while, yeah, I will go too deep into detail, but it's an overview for the people in your attendance, as you're well. This is the property behind Clark Testing, as well as some of the area we own just, uh, east of that on our property there. This is an area that's been contaminated by the former Clark operations over there, these restrictive covenants have been in place for a number of years. Uh, we're actually on the third version of them, these will be the fourth. We are required to, to agree to these covenant changes based on the original agreement. Um, our attorney, uh, uh, our environmental attorney at Buckles reviewed everything, everything's standard and regular, and they are comfortable with the requesting changes.
Is there anything we're gonna do with the property, or is it even big enough that we can do anything? What is it, an alley?
Go ahead, like, please, sorry, the geography through there is up and down, it's not valuable property, really all we have through there is the, uh, the parking lot by the trail over there by Clark Testing, and the trail itself through there with the fencing on both sides. It's really not a developable piece of property, anyway, so not, you know, build on it, nobody's like, who just doesn't cite the old laws.
Could have checked the same.
Yeah. Very good, at this time, I'll take a motion on restrictive covenant.
I'd move to approve the city manager to execute the restrictive covenant updates as presented.
Thank you, do we have support?
I'll support that.
Thank you, further discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Weeden.
Thank, yes.
George.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
And Bianski.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to item B, introduction of ordinance twenty-twenty-five dot one-two four-four-six, an ordinance for sanitary lateral sewer service.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and commissioners, uh, this is something that's been a policy for the city for ten, if not twenty years, uh, where the laterals are from the home or the structure to the main is the responsibility of the property owner, that has been the policy, that policy's in your package here. It's just best to codify this and make it part of our code and ordinances, it's better than having it as a policy, so really, this is a cleanup item to put into place officially, something that's been a city policy for going on twenty years now, and then we just cleaned up a few of it, while we were doing that. As I said, it was a gray area in, in there for a long time, for a lot, for a lot of people, and they didn't realize it, so just take care of that, it's just really, yeah, really, yeah, yeah.
Okay, at this time, I'll take a motion on introduction of said ordinance.
I'm moving to approve the introduction of ordinance for sanitary lateral sewer service and schedule a public hearing for January twelfth, twenty-twenty-six as presented.
Thank you, sir, do we have support?
This is money, I support.
Thank you, further discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
George.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Bianski.
Yes.
And Weeden.
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to item C, C D B G Northside Home Repair Program, consider the approval of a bid and contract award to Cameron's Construction for the amount of thirty-six thousand nine-hundred-and-seven dollars for five-one-four, uh, Morovia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and for the commission as well, uh, what we have before you is contract approval for some ADA modifications and needed M E P improvements at the structure. A hundred percent of this cost is being funded through a community development block grant from the state of Michigan, so, uh, we'll be able to help somebody in one of our neighborhoods create some accessibility, improve the safety at their home with outside money, which is always a nice thing to be able to do.
Very good. At this time, I'll take a motion on said program.
I move to approve the bid and contract award for five-fourteen Morovia? Morania? As presented. Orbania?
Orbania.
Say Bianski twice.
Everybody can gather all the time.
I appreciate the call participation, that was fantastic, yeah, do we have support?
Long response.
This is five-fourteen. Five-fourteen.
I'll support.
Thank you, further discussion? Our crowd participation, if you want. Very good, roll call, please.
George.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Bianski.
Yes.
And Weeden.
Yes.
Bianski.
Yeah, right, shut up. It's not even spoken by my home. Okay, moving on to item B, traffic control order number two-six-zero, consider the traffic control order on the west side of Days, south of Chicago Street, and north of East Rose Street, shall be no parking zone except in areas that are already posted as designated parking zones.
Is this one you guys want to table to a future meeting and discuss additionally?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, yeah. I'd like to just postpone it till the end of February, because I think, you know, I've, I have some pretty adamant feelings about it, um.
You'd like to make a motion.
But, yeah, I'll make a motion to postpone it till the last meeting in February.
Okay, do we have support?
This is money, I'll support it.
Very good, uh, discussion. Okay, roll call, please.
Money.
Yes.
Bianski.
Yes.
Weeden.
No.
And George.
No.
So you got, then it goes to the nose.
Goes to the nose.
So, I mean, the thing about it is, is it's a, you know, we don't have a deciding vote. Um, I'm only gonna say, you know, there's things that we as commissioners need to learn on this, and I believe we have learned on this. This is a disagreement based on what I feel, um, and I can vague that, and I lobbied pretty hard for it, based on what I feel, so, I mean.
I, I think that the diplomatic way to which Dan handled it, and this is something for the public to be aware of, the discussions that were had, uh, were a difference of opinions. And I believe that's exactly how the commission should be run, doesn't mean that I dislike Dan, I didn't, I didn't agree with his opinion, and that's perfectly okay. And I think that this gives validity to a further discussion, to come to a consensus that we all can agree on, so that when we present it to the public, we're in lockstep with exactly what the ordinance is supposed to be and what the intent is. So I think that's something that has been drastically not followed throughout the years of this commission, uh, for, for decades. Uh, and, and there was always hate and discontent, and people would take things personally. I think this is an opportunity for us to have disagreements, and we move forward, and that's okay, so casual discourse sometimes gives us a better understanding of exactly what we're trying to accomplish for the city, and this is a situation where that occurred, so we move on. Need a roll call on that?
No, you did have a roll call on that.
I did. Oh, yes, we did. Okay, we're good. Alright, moving on to item E, Southwest Michigan Planning Commission, consider approval for Southwest.
Point where.
Absolutely.
Since it was the.
It was.
One of you needs to change your vote.
Yeah, it's.
They need to either change their vote or make a different motion.
Well, you can rescind or take a different motion, but you technically just, because you, that went to the nose, so technically, it goes to the nose.
It goes to the nose, then it needs to be brought back up, and you need to make a different motion.
But there's no further decision. You need to brought, yeah.
So the motion, you know, I can make the motion.
I'll, I'll resend my vote.
You'll resend your vote.
I'll resend my vote, just to move on for the purpose of discussion.
So then not come back?
It will go, correct.
Come back in favor, yep.
Do we need to make a new motion for the rescinded, our new roll call for the resentment?
Let's, um, yeah. Let's, uh, make the motion to rescind your, you're gonna make the motion to rescind your vote, unless you have a majority on that.
Okay. Okay, I will make a motion to rescind my vote, and, uh, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, I'm more comfortable with that one.
I agree.
Now, I do really mind making a point, there's a lot of things, the way this city's been run for so long, that we don't understand as a group. And we want to support you, but, you know, sometimes the battles were fought here, and I'm really trying to not fight the battles here. That's why I did what I did today, and that's why I did what I did, and, you know, my, I am a hundred percent behind you. There's some things I'm gonna disagree with you on, and the way I used to disagree was not very polite, and hurt a lot of people's feelings, and I'm over that, because out of respect for you, I don't want to give you the extra noise dealing with what I put out there.
And that's how it's done, people. Okay.
Get Harvey Walsh to pass.
I don't know what that means.
Get it out of here quicker.
Okay, well, moving on. This is Larry. Uh, item B, Southwest Michigan Planning Commission, consider approval for the Southwest Michigan Planning Commission contract for a five-year parks and recreation plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, what we have behind you, before you here is a contract to develop any city's new, uh, parks and recreation plans for the year twenty-seven, twenty-thirty-one. Uh, current plan, uh, expires at the end of twenty-twenty-six, it takes about a year to do the plan. Uh, we have a contract before us from. Uh, we have a contract before us from the Southwest Michigan Planning Commission, who has done our plans for, from what I understand, at least fifteen years now. Uh, this this proposed price of all the old market, if we were to go out to private consulting firms to do the market, the for this work. Uh, given the potential conflict of interest with this organization myself, Cal and I actually handle all the negotiations and bidding on this before you last evening, so just to make sure there is no question on on here.
Very good. Okay, at this time I'll take a motion on the planning commission contract.
I move to approve the contract with Southwest Michigan Planning Commission in the amount of twelve thousand three hundred twenty eight dollars as presented.
Thank you, do we have support?
Money? This is my out support.
Thank you, discussion?
Um, I was very much involved in it previously, there's some questions I'm gonna ask you about price after the fact. Um, because there were some things done substantially different.
Okay.
I just wanted that to be on the record.
Alright, roll call please.
Weeden?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
And Weeden?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to item F, expenditures, consider the expenditures that were approved administratively from the November tenth and those from this November twenty fourth meeting totaling an amount of one hundred and twenty one thousand seven hundred ninety dollars and ten cents. So at this time I'll take a motion on those expenditures.
This is money I'd move to approve the expenditures in the amount of one hundred and twenty one thousand seven hundred ninety dollars and ten cents as presented.
Thank you, sir, do we have support?
No support.
Thank you, discussion?
Yeah, um, Tony and I go over this, this was a month's worth of expenditures. Um, it's basically getting down to, I don't catch him off anymore hardly. Um, there's been a couple of times I've gotten him, that makes me feel good, but, you know, he's got a lot going on, so I mean, it's getting tighter and tighter all the time, and I wanna point that out. And it's always good to have another set of eyes go over it, and I really feel good about actually having it separate and not going through the consent calendar.
I do, I agree.
Thank you very much for that.
I agree one hundred percent. Very good, roll call please.
George?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
And Weeden?
Yes, thank you. At this time we do not have any communications, and we will take public comment on non-agenda items only, please limit your comments to three minutes and approach the phone even states your name for the record.
I do have a correspondence.
Okay.
That was rock on. Anybody else wants to make a comment first?
Go ahead.
Danny, and you go.
Hi, I'm Jackie Bartis, nine oh nine ring your sin. Uh, I just wanted to say to Tony, thank you for all the hard work downtown, it looks fantastic, I know it's only gonna get better. Um, and to all the crews that worked so hard, weekends, evenings, I mean, we saw them out there all the time. Um, and to the businesses that hung in there, thank you, we're excited to have downtown open again. Um, and to be able to enjoy the uh small, what is it, small business shopping Saturday, uh after Thanksgiving, so just wanted to put that on.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Jackie.
Thank you.
Haley Jones with Chunks, um, I've just got up here to ask to see what, some clarification for summer, how they plan to keep cars from driving down Dewey? Cause there's already been multiple cars that have drove down on the sidewalk. So, I just wanna see how we're gonna prevent that.
She's not lying.
So nobody gets ran over or my employees don't get ran over going into work.
Well, my first instinct would be to say that we're probably going to put up some.
We're working, yeah.
I would imagine you are, yeah, that's fine.
People are driving on sidewalks, wasn't in the original plan.
There's a lot of things that weren't handed out sometimes when they.
There's a temporary, this is what I made, there's a temporary barricade going up, if it's not already, so it's already up, and we're working on a permanent solution, because we saw the same thing this morning. It wasn't one or two cars, it was fifteen, silly.
No.
What?
What part of Dewey?
The, the, exactly, you'd sound like all of us this morning.
By the way, yes, we're the new side.
I wish I was.
My god!
Anyway, we're working on, having done a lot of public works projects over the years, you can never fully anticipate for what humanity is capable of in a design, and there's always a few things like this to it, and we're sat for the fact, and we will.
That was the one when I saw you out walking with a couple.
That was that this morning, yes.
That was us this morning.
Were you there?
Never ceases to amaze me.
That was another level.
I don't know if this is allowed, um, if I get into it and you um don't think it is, please tell me to stop. Um, there's a group of business owners that are meeting tomorrow at three thirty at Hilltop, and we're um looking at putting together a Buchanan business owner group. They had something going during the construction, so far as communications between all of themselves, and now we're looking at doing something um permanent and manageable. So that we can get together and plan events and communicate with each other. So if there are any business owners in the room, please try and make it to Hilltop tomorrow at three thirty. If not, it's every Tuesday at three thirty at Hilltop, so, and then hopefully you'll hear a lot of good things from us in the future.
What is your business?
Um, helping them.
Promotion, promotion.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't mean that in a in a mean way, helping them.
No, I, you do mean it in the most honest way.
Yeah, yeah, yes. Volunteer.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that, that's a great thing. Okay, okay, seeing no more public comments at this time.
I got one.
Yeah, oh, that's right.
Um, I received this from Harold Hoover, um, it really is concerning regarding a long abandoned property at two fifteen Sullivan Street. He was writing firmly, was concerned regarding the house in the neighborhood that has been abandoned for approximately fifteen years. This prob- uh, property has been a serious eyesore and a blight on the area, in addition to its deterior- deterioration condition. It now serves as a ref- refuge for feral cats and vermin, posing both health and safety concerns for nearby residents. Um, he goes on to say Buchanan has made commendable efforts to improve its overall appearance and quality of life, however, the presence of this long abandoned house such as this, um, one undermines the efforts and discourages neighborhood pride and property investment.
What was the address?
Yeah, it's the same one.
Two fifteen Sullivan Street?
Two fifteen Sullivan.
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 I could answer that, I mean, I, we do have answers to that, but I mean, I can do it in my comments, or you can do it right now?
Oh, I can, if you, yeah, we, this one is in our radar, but we can go with the property owner of Indiana, when he sent that letter and we've engaged that, we've did our initial notices and a list of improvements that need to be made before winter time here, or tickets are coming your way.
And we do have the vacant property through the plan commission. That's gonna give us the teams to do this, and I like the fact, and I'd like to communicate that out, you know, we tell us, because a lot of times we don't know. I drive around a lot, I write it down, the DPW writes it down, the police write it down, but we've actually got an active, active city manager that's gonna pursue this. And we're writing rules and ordinances so that we can track these people down, so we can do something about it.
Thanks, Dan. Okay, city manager's coming in.
Yes, sir, just a a couple of quick updates, as you guys know, thank you for the entire staff and everybody who helped the downtown business, get everything ready for last week. I think we had a great event reopened in the community, huge turnout, good media for the thing. We'll continue to work on punch list items from now into the spring, the trees and the streetscape furniture go in the spring as well. Um, you'll see us addressing things between now and then, and that's just part of the process, you normally experience it. Uh, Mike and his guys are getting sand ready to go out to all the businesses this week before we get the cold weather starting on Thursday. Uh, we originally looking at calcium chloride, but I've talked to the concrete association, they actually for the first winter say, you really wanna do the best thing for it, just get sand out there. So that's where we're gonna get five gallon buckets of sand out, everybody that Mike and his crew are working on, uh, for that, for the initial, so we're gonna start with that to begin with. Um, DDA interviews for our vacant place, we're having those next Thursday, three o'clock. Uh, the reason I found you guys at this is because it will be back before you. The plan is right now for the candidates to be interviewed by the DDA members. They will then make a recommendation to the mayor, who will make a recommendation to you for appointment, so you'll be seeing them, be either coming for your December meeting or your January bump, I mean, December at this point. And other than that, uh, one more thing, we do have a new city planner that will be starting with us on December fifteenth. Uh, Kristen Guttersen, who's got a great deal of experience in both uh state of Illinois and in Michigan, she was born, raised over Niles and still lives in this area. Uh, she'll be joining us on December fifteenth, and she's gonna be a great addition to the staff.
Awesome.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
The DDA, you sent me all them rules, but I couldn't find the specific. The state of Michigan kinda stepped on the DDA's when they created that super majority to actually do business.
Yeah, so you, with DDA's in Michigan with that public act, you have to have eight members to do business, you can't have less than eight members, so right now the DDA has six. They can have their spot, they can still hold workshops, which that's what they're doing right now, is kind of working through the development plan anyways, uh, because they don't need to vote on anything, right? They're thinking of ideas on what they wanna go forward, um, talking it out as a group, just workshopping it, right? So, we have to have those two other members to make final decisions though, so that's why we're kind of, we have five applicants for the DDA for a couple of spots. Um, like I said, they'll interview.
Do you know who authored that bill, cause I'd really like to talk to them and find out.
I, I would have to go back in legislation and look and see who authored it.
I wanna get in touch with them. Because, you know, a quorum is a quorum is a quorum, and I'd like to know why they changed it for the DDA.
I don't know, I have no idea, but that's the way they wrote the rules on that one, that's what, actually, when I, I was like, well, me and Tony had this argument, cause I'm like, what are you talking about, they can't make, they have a quorum. Well, no, they don't, they have to have eight members on that board to before they.
See, that's why I was so adamant about it too, because I knew they had a quorum. And the numbers were exactly sixty-six and two thirds. But they came up with the bull's rule in Lansing.
Yep.
Politicians hard at work.
I'm sure there's a good reason behind it.
Oh, you betcha, I'm sure there is, it's a matter of opinion, ain't it?
Dan, Dan, you you already had the photo, man, yeah, she's on the way with you. Commissioner, absolutely.
There was something, oh, are we using the wood stove now, or the furnace?
Oh, good.
Is it working well?
Yep.
Do they make them big enough to do one for like the school, or is that kinda max the size? Do you have any idea?
Believe that you can get one built however big you would want it to be.
Okay, well, I'm gonna look it up, but I just thought maybe I'd ask you, it's working well though, you got all the bugs out of it?
Yeah, so, um, we have an earth fault, whatever that means, that we're working through right now. I, uh, we, it's actually the second time we've saw, seen it this year, and we are working through it, as I said, it came in, um, and then I found it today. I've tried to figure out what it is, but some sort of earth fault is what it's saying. Let's see.
Okay, how long?
Earth leakage.
Hmm.
Earth fault.
Yeah, that could be all kinds of things.
Yeah, so, we're working through that right now, but it is heating the floors at this point.
How much wood, like, it's not, it's only barely freezing at night?
Uh, we, I have loaded it. Four times since I have lit a fire in it three weeks ago.
Wow, so we're gonna see that reflected in our gas bills? Okay.
So.
And I'm, I'm really curious, cause I'm curious about the school too, cause there's plenty of wood out there, it's not like it wouldn't be, so, okay. That's really all, you know, thank you, oh, I did wanna ask, why did we put the step with the hand railings in front of Zen Leaf and in front of the hardware stuff?
That is actually designed to the use to make up parade, when you have that big a difference in elevation between the road surface and the doorway.
Okay.
Because you can't radiate. It's a, it's an acceptable approach, there are others that I would have liked seeing. We have, just put what you see up there now for a temporary thing, so a couple of people were stumbling, so they couldn't see that transition well. Uh, we've got some rails being made up that'll go through there, they're in the black that match our downtown.
So you're gonna put them on the face of the step?
Yeah, right at the edge there, right where ours, so it'll be a clean walk.
Well, I've been asked a couple of times, and of course, federal government have, should've known.
So, we're working through it.
My scooter may not go up in elevation like that.
Your scooter may not sure.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
I don't go in the mud either, with it.
Get you new tires?
Might not be up, be in a parade. Cause of the snow. I'm done.
That's probably good. Okay, Mr. Money?
On your comment too, to Mike about uh the wood products, I donated to that the other day, so.
Good.
But I just got a couple of things, you know, had it written up here, so I don't forget. So, what a great couple of days for the city of Buchanan. Our streets are back to traffic, you can park downtown and visit your favorite stores and restaurants. We do not have to detour through the heights to go to Harding's Market, our infrastructure downtown is back to a high capacity. And the flag of our country once again is proudly displayed up, displayed on Front Street. These are just a few of the things that I see for a positive Buchanan. But all of these things have come with a cost, many, many months of dirt roads, potholes, detour signs, holes in the streets big enough to lose a vehicle in. Sleepless nights for the DPW workers, city police, the fire department members, not to mention the frustration for our city manager and our outstanding city staff. And what about the great turnout for the reopening ceremony? And that evening was just as, just as exciting for those who ventured downtown. Thank you to our chamber and city staff for putting on such an outstanding event. But through it all, the city has, the city and the patience of the ci- citizens of our community have persevered. We have made the best of a bad situation, and it, and it is now time to move forward. With a few little tweaks we have yet to finish, by next year we should all be back to normal. But wait, I also had one other thought while walking downtown Saturday morning, excuse me, I encountered Mayor Weeden and his wife also enjoying the spacious sidewalks and the streetscape. And I mentioned to him, that isn't it great that a town with a population of forty-five hundred plus is so fortunate to be in such good hands in the future? Because within the confines of our small city and the surrounding townships, we have more architects, city consultants, infrastructure designers, and construction professionals than any other community around. So thank you for your support and understanding through these tumultuous times. Wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and don't forget, uh, the Small Business Saturday this coming weekend. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome, sir. Ms. George?
Um, thank you, Larry, for that, that speech, um. Just wanted to say thank you again to everybody that put on the ribbon cutting, that was a great turnout. Um, and to go further than that, just everybody that has, um, you know, persevered through that whole fiasco and people that were thrown into it. Uh, the city staff, DPW, police, um, fire, everybody that, uh, Larry mentioned. Um, but most importantly, the residents of Buchanan who had to drive the extra way, had to get up earlier in the morning, all of those things to, that are inconvenient. But, um, now we can reap the benefits of it, and, um, I'm just proud, I was so proud of our community on Friday. And I just can't wait to, it was so fun just driving here, I was like, you know, I got my music on, like, this is great. Um, so I just wanna say thank you, and I wanna say how proud and happy I am to be in Buchanan, be a part of Buchanan, and serve Buchanan. Um, with that being said, also wanted to invite everybody out to the White Saturday, um, parade this Saturday at five thirty. If you wanna see the Grinch, he will be there in flesh.
Live and in person.
In the flesh, so, give it up for Dan, everyone. He will be there, and he will be dressed up as the Grinch, so I'm super excited for this.
You'll never guess who Max is, will you?
Anyway, um, yeah, that is, uh, November twenty ninth at five thirty, so, super excited for that, hope everybody can show up and, um, wanna wish everybody happy Thanksgiving and have a fun time with your family. So, thank you.
Well, uh, we made it, we made it, uh, Friday was absolutely amazing, uh, the news media, the the, to see everybody from Buchanan who grew up here and and to see their smiling faces and. Just to see the excitement that was happening down there, that we realized that the audio that was at the the meeting was not the greatest, well, live and learn, you know, if that's the one thing that went terrible, I guess we can live with it. Uh, I can't, I don't know how you guys feel, but I can't keep myself from going down there now, and I already enjoyed the city as it was. But now it's just like this, this continuous pull to wanna go and see like, does this is really real, did this really happen, like, this is what we accomplished? Uh, and we're not even done yet, we haven't even really put the lipstick on it yet, so, um, I'm excited for the adventures that Buchanan has before us, the amount of developers that have been in contact. The amount of developers that have been in contact with us, what, what's happening on the north side. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm certain that the north side group is just ever more excited to see opportunities thrive within their community that they've been begging for, for many years. Um, we have a lot of great things ahead of us, and I believe that what we just did and what we accomplished in this city is, is just a small testament to what is, is going to be accomplished in the next three to five years. So I mean, it's kind of pressure on Tony, because that's been the sentiment, I've said it every single minute, three to five years, this is something that you will not recognize the city, and I mean it from a positive perspective, so. Um, please invite your friends and family this weekend. It's gonna be amazing. The stores will be open, they've already decorated, and I believe that the corner location with the kids daycare for aftercare is really putting, is gonna put the, the rest of them on notice. They were in there painting, and it looks beautiful from what I could tell. Um, began to look out for outdoor seating. I, I can't tell you every restaurant I've spoken to, between the sweet shop, McCoy's, even, uh, retail shops that don't even have food. Everybody's excited to put tables outside this year. I believe our social districts is, is gonna be something that is gonna be well, uh, utilized in the next, uh, two, three years to come, so. Thank you for the community, for their patience. Uh, thank you to the Facebook Rambo's who help us become better people and understand where we may be missing things and where we definitely didn't miss, so. Um, with that, I will take a motion.
I'd like to make one more comment. You brought up, you're gonna have your meetings, we do have meetings here at noon yet, right, for business owners?
A couple of weeks ahead.
And we do have the DDA, so I mean, keep that in mind when you created another committee, you know, try to consolidate with the DDA, because actually that's what their job is. And Tony gets one or two business owners down here at City Hall at noon, because of the, he created that two months ago now. So I mean, you get some one-on-one time with your city manager for an hour, so keep that in mind.
I will, thanks.
Three thirty on Tuesdays, you said?
Yes.
I will send it out though, too.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I.
My second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
George?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Beyanski?
Yes.
And Whedon?
Yes.